There was a question about combining a couple of special call meetings. It's my understanding that while we can't combine them, we can make it a little more convenient by moving the one at the end. We'll just move it up front and have it first and then we'll proceed with the next along. In fact, no one has any objection to that?
Yes, sir.
You have objections?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
You put the agenda together. You asked, "How could we be in this position? How can we all of a sudden change the agenda?"
Well, Mr. Bryan, I believe, sent an email wanting to change. It's fine, believe, we'll leave it where it is if that's what y'all want to do. It doesn't matter to me. Do you want to change it or... I understand that the ordinance from the Charter will not allow us to actually combine. That's what I understand. Is that right, Father?
The Charter will not allow us.
That's right. My only rationale for wanting to put them both on front is that those are both probably what a lot of the public is here for.
Right.
This place, so...
Well, that's why I've got no objection either way.
Okay.
We got...I just had to see us making big decisions at the end of the three hour long meeting.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor, the Charter explicitly gives you the authority to prepare or have prepared an agenda for this meeting, and that determines the sequences of the agenda. I believe that's your call as to where you want to place it. I believe all of the meetings were called for six o'clock. Is that not correct?
Originally, that was the case.
So it doesn't really matter the sequence and within the Charter, it's your prerogative to decide the sequence on it?
Actually, it says six o'clock, 6:20, and 7:15.
And the reason for that was that the clerk indicated to me she could not have three separate agendas under the program that we have and put them at the same time. They had to space it out in order for the particular program to function properly. So let's go ahead and let's move to the one that said 7:15 there, which really is the special call meeting for the regarding action regarding the Section 223 of our...well, I'm sorry. Action Regarding to Mean Section 223 Regarding Mayoral and City Council Compensation. But first, we're going to have this public input regarding any issue that anyone would like to make.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I don't think we resolved the problem with the agenda.
Yeah, I did. I resolved it.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
I missed it. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. The public input period for that one, first person, we have three or four here, Roy Barnes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe that's the first argument I've ever heard over an agenda, but I'm sure Father won't be the last I've ever heard.
You should be.
I'm here representing the mayor, and I want to make certain remarks regarding the veto override. And the arguments that I have about the veto override is to give notice to the members of the council is that, in my view, and I think is confirmed, and I'll give you some case law here to this effect in just a moment, that you're changing the form of the government, which only the General Assembly can do and not cannot, is beyond the power of the home rule. Home rule is governed for municipalities under the Constitution of Georgia in Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 2, which delegates to the General Assembly the right to give to local governments home rule. It says, however, in that act, which was originally passed in 1965, that any action affecting the composition and form of the municipal governing authority is exempt from home rule, and only the General Assembly can undertake that. Now, if we look at the Charter of the City of Canton, there is a provision in the Charter that says, 2.36, that says, "The mayor shall be the chief executive of the city. The mayor shall possess all of the executive and administrative power granted to the city under the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia," and all of the executive and administrative powers in this Charter. The section that you are amending is the one right above, and it says, which is, "Given the powers to the mayor." And in fact, it is specifically set out as powers, election of the mayor, powers and duties of the mayor. And in it, it says he should preside, as he does, at City Council, which have the right to administer oaths, to take bonds and all this. And then it says, "May select or appoint it or employed staff," except that City Council budget control, which has to be exercised according to case law and good faith. "And any employee shall be entitled to all of the benefits available to city employees pursuant to personnel policies of the city, except the mayor shall be the only supervisor of such employee." Now, for example, could the council change the same section and delete the right of the mayor to preside at the meeting? Could they take away his right to sign contracts? Could they take away his right to administer oaths? And I suggest to you, you could not without the power of the General Assembly passing a local act and approved by the General Assembly. Now, there's some case law that has...City of Atlanta has spawned a lot of appellate case law over the years, and there's a case that I draw your attention to called Maynard H. Jackson versus John F. Ennam. It's found at 32 Georgia, 1966, which is a decision of the Supreme Court of Georgia, passed in...I mean, it was decided in 1974. What happened was, Maynard Jackson was elected in 1973, the city, as mayor of the City of Atlanta. At the same time, they had passed a new charter, except they had passed it through the General Assembly. And under the new charter, the mayor could remove a department head or could call him upon to be tried before the council. John Ennam sued and says, "Oh, no. The General Assembly has no authority under this section to have passed the new charter." And it is therefore unconstitutional because home rule, same argument is made here. Home rule is the one that controls everything. Well, the Supreme Court decided otherwise, and this is what they said. The essential question we face in reviewing the Constitution of Atlanta's new charter is whether the special act was necessary to authorize the City of Atlanta to make the changes made in the government, or whether these changes could be made by the city under the present general home rule laws. We conclude the special non-charter act was necessary because the existing general laws did not provide sufficient authority for the city to make the fundamental and substantive changes which have been made in the city government of the City of Atlanta. And I suggest to you that that is the same thing here. You are to take away any of the powers that are granted under 2-35 or 2.35 of the Charter, particularly in light of the fact that 2.36 says that the mayor is the chief executive, both administratively and executive of this entire city, is a change in the form of government that is prohibited, just like it was under Jackson versus Ennam. And therefore, you cannot undertake, and the ordinance is invalid, and if you override it, I respectfully suggest it will be an ultra vires act that could expose members of the council to personal liability. Those are the arguments that I make. I will present them or answer any questions that anyone has about that, but I respectfully request that you decide not to override the mayor, as the action of the ordinance was clearly illegal, the inaction of the ordinance was clearly illegal.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In your section 2.35, powers and duties of the mayor, and it listed A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I. You include one last item there.
What's that?
You said that he is the sole coordinator, nobody's assistant.
It's the next section. It's the next section. 2.36 says, "The mayor shall be the chief executive of this city. The mayor shall possess all of the executive and administrative power granted to the city under the Constitution and laws of the state," and all of the executive and administrative powers contained in this charter. 235, above which you sought, which y'all are seeking to strike, gives powers to the mayor, but the 236 makes him the chief executive officer of the city, both executive and administrative. And so therefore, you cannot change those powers unless you go to the General Assembly and change the form of the government. You have a strong mayor, weak manager, weak council system. That's the way that this was written. In fact, if you go to the General Municipal Association, Georgia Municipal Association, and pull out the pollings, it will show that you are a strong mayor assistant, because this is...whenever this phrase is used...
Yes, sir.
Wait, let me finish. Answer now. You ask it, and I'm going to answer it too. Whenever the chief executive officer is set forth this way, you have a strong mayor system.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We don't have that system.
Well, sir, you have it right here. Whether you want to recognize it or not, and whether it has to be decided by a court, it will be, but you have a strong mayor system under the chief executive officer, and you cannot change those powers without it. And you get the General Assembly care, but you can't. Home rule is not granted to you to change the form of government.
Then how do we change the Charter? You can change... We changed the Charter. Put this in there.
Well, sir...
Well, sir?
It was also in the old Charter that was created, that was passed by the General Assembly.
With changes? With not...with changes?
Well, we're not here to argue this right now.
He brought him in, and he answered questions.
Yeah, he answered the question, and I think that's all we need to do.
And the question is, those powers were originally...if you want me to answer it, the powers were originally contained in an act of the General Assembly.
I understand it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I got a question.
All right.
Chief executive officer.
Administrative and chief executive.
I understand what chief executive officer is in the private world, but I'm not sure I'm clear in the world of government.
Well... "The mayor shall be the chief executive of this city. The mayor shall possess all," I sum, "all of the executive and administrative powers in the city under the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia, and all executive and administrative powers contained in this charter." I don't know how much broader you could make.
That's what I'm saying. It's too broad. Well, you're using the question I have, you're using the same language in your answer. I'm asking you, what is a chief executive in government? And you're using chief executive over and over. I still don't know what chief executive in government is.
Well, what did you intend when you asked?
I meant, the question is...
Well, the question is, the point is, you granted all of the power to the mayor.
Okay. I have a question.
Executive and administrative power.
Go ahead.
In some of the emails and different things that have been floating around here in the last days, I keep seeing, I'm going to tell you. I keep sending it still about the executive branch of our government. We are a governing body of the mayor and council. We do not have an executive branch. We do not have a House of Representatives or a Senate. We do not have an executive branch.
If you want to ask a question, ask a question. If you want to make a speech, we'll do that another time.
Excuse me, sir. I'm trying to make a point.
Well, you...I'd like to answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
That was also answered in the case of Ennam Jackson versus Ennam, because the language in the City of Atlanta Charter is almost identical to the language you have in your Charter. Here's what they say, the Supreme Court of Georgia, that we're bound by. "An examination of the new charter, clear review reveals that the city has championed change drastically from a strong commission form of government, under which the Board of Alderman legislated and supervised 26 administrative departments of the city through committees, to a new form of government, with the mayor as the executive and the council as the legislative body, requiring a classic separation of powers not contained in old form of government." The language in the City of Atlanta is almost identical.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, let me finish the answer. So, the answer I have is, you may be under the opinion of what you have, but the case law clearly, and the Constitution clearly holds that.
The question I have, then, we changed the Charter last year, and we did not go to the legislation. Therefore, that change of the Charter was not legal. It wasn't appropriate, because we did not take the method that you prescribed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I just want to make sure...
Well, and I will answer your question, okay? And the answer to your question is, sir, you don't have to be confrontational with me. I'd be glad...
No, but I'm serious. We did something. We did something with the idea that we were doing it correctly. And now you're telling us that what we're proposing is not legal, so we were doing it incorrectly.
All right.
So what we did last year, we've done it correctly and should be not valid.
No, sir. Let me answer. You're not understanding what the law says. The law...Well, sir, do you want me to answer the question? Do you just want to make side comments?
I knew both.
All right. The issue is, there are certain things you cannot do under home rule. There are certain things that you can do. A municipality is the creation of the General Assembly of the State of Georgia. It has only such authority as granted to it either by general or special law. The special law is general in the Charter. And what the General Assembly said, and it's very clear, I know the legislative history very well, because I wrote these two sections in the Constitution and in 1982, and what it said was, "The General Assembly would not, we would not require you to go to the General Assembly to annex a piece of property as long as it was contiguous. We wouldn't even require you to go to the General Assembly to reapportion. We wouldn't bring, we would not..."But to reapportion required, it was not authorized, it was not authorized to even reapportion until the General Assembly said you could specifically reapportion. We even allowed you to set your own salary, but we did not allow you to change the form of government. And when you take away the powers of the mayor, when he is shown to be the chief executive officer in the Charter, then you have changed the form of government.
You still didn't answer my question.
Well, maybe I was confused.
Maybe you were.
Okay.
The question is this.
And the question is, part about passing last year, all the things that you passed, not all of them were invalid. I haven't been hired to look into everything in your Charter, but I have been shown this. If any provision that changed the form of government last year, then it would be invalid also.
Well, have you looked at that?
Yes, I have. And when you look at that, the powers that were contained were really contained in several amendments in the Charter of 1922 that was passed of the City of Canton. So you would fall back on those. Now, if you want to fall back on that, that's fine. The only thing that gave you the city manager was in 1964. There was an act passed that specifically gave you a weak city manager. And the reason the weak city manager is because he doesn't serve a fixed term. He can be suspended without cause. He can be hired and fired without cause. And those are generally considered to be weak city manager governments. So you could...I'm not saying everything that you passed last year was invalid, but if you sought to change the form of government, and the mayor has always been the chief executive, even going back to 1922.
Mr. Governor?
Yes, sir.
I don't really have a question, just a statement to concur, is that the Charter that we did change early last year, in my opinion, did not alter the form of government. It clarified specific points within the Charter that were ambiguous. And so therefore, I feel it still could have been done under home rule. Now, I stand to be corrected, but that was my opinion of the Charter that we did pass last year.
I think that what you enacted, I don't think you changed the form of government in 2012, this year. I don't think you changed the form of government in 2005, which was the Charter before. And the 2005 Charter was really the first Charter since 1922 that you'd gone through. You had a comprehensive revision in 2005. And so I don't, you could, as long as you don't take away a power. I mean, you can clarify, you can do all this, but you cannot take away a power of a mayor when he's the chief executive officer without...I'm not saying that it's written in stone. It's just that you can't do it. The General Assembly must be, must do it with a special or local law.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Carol Day?
I'm coming in late on this. I missed some of your discussion last month because I was out of town. I came home to understand some of these things were going on. What I do understand about what's been attempted to be done is, there is a large drive to undermine the credibility of the City of Canton through inappropriate collaboration between council members, and they are bringing that forward in public mailings at the expense of the taxpayer that are issues that have been reiterated in public at this podium and at this council meeting. They have been reiterated again through emails and other conversations. What we see here is a bunch of people who were hired, being elected, a few were hired, but most of you were elected. An elected position of this sort is a community service. You come to this with your expertise as business people, and as business people, you have always been paid for your services. It's a big learning curve to come into public service as a true servant of the people that you serve, and I think this council has a lot to learn on that, and I think that there have been underhanded, undermined, things that have gone on behind closed doors, and you can call it what you want, I'm entitled to my opinion. I have seen those of you on the council work diligently for things that you saw as a purpose. But what I have seen from you in the last several months is a continual dialogue of confrontation over issues that you really are not empowered to do, obviously by what Mr. Barnes has told you, and it's up to you whether you choose to accept that or not. But you have become a mockery to the public that you serve.
Amen.
Thank you. Do you maintain decorum in this place? Could you break out your gavel and use it?
I think it would go pretty well.
Here we go again. Your last meeting, much to my surprise, you gave up all indication that you were beginning to act like adults. Reunited vote, compromised by approving a memorandum of understanding, most welcome. Here we are, two weeks later, and you decide again to reverse yourselves. This is reminiscent of your vote to accept the rewritten Charter and then to reverse yourselves. Amazingly, as I read the agenda, you're now proposing to flip-flop again and reinstate the phrase that you just deleted. It's obvious to me that you don't care about perception of incompetence that you give to the world. How would anyone serious about investing in the City of Canton view your inability to make a decision and to stick by it? There's much more to this than all this bickering, as being said. I, for one, would like to see one or more of you have the guts to say what it is about Mayor Hobgood's agenda and his vision for the City of Canton that you disagree with, that makes you act like bullies. You disregard the wishes of your constituents who speak from this podium, and you continue to promote your inscrutable agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have on that one. So now we will continue with the meeting. Item A, action on ordinance to mean Section 223 regarding mayoral and city council compensation. This, as you know, this is a...
Mr. Mayor?
Is that attachment on...
Is that attachment on?
How are we talking about what Mr. Barnes was talking about? And we're sitting here talking about our meeting, and this particular part of the meeting is about pay raises.
Well, the next of it, it's just the way it falls. If you want to, if, if the council wants to change this and put B first, we can do that.
Oh, okay, I apologize. I've got so many agendas, I'm sorry. I was a little confused.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address that issue, A.
Yes, sir.
On the, um, the, uh, potential to override the mayor's veto for the proposed, uh, city council compensation package. I, um, have, have read your reasons for overriding the veto. It's never been a big issue for me personally, one way or the other, other than the fact that the, the pay that the City of Canton gives to its elected officials is, is pitiful, it's a pettance compared to other comparable cities. Right now, we're kind of in a, in a, I call it a, a compensation purgatory. It's next to nothing, but it's nowhere near what Carterville, Woodstock, and even Holly Springs and, and Acworth, the cities comparable to us, pay. So, you know, you bring up some good points in your veto, and, uh, you know, what I'm ready to do is just, um, either leave the compensation where it is or just make it all zero. Let's just zero it all out. None of us make anything, us elected officials. I mean, we're here, uh, we're making twenty-one hundred dollars. I know myself, I've rarely ever turned in gas expenses or other expenses associated with this thing. Uh, last year, I forgot to turn in my, uh, campaign contribution form, which is all zeros, it's always zeros, but I gotta pay a hundred and seventy-five dollar fine now the State of Georgia. City's not gonna pay that. But I'm ready to just go zero, take that off the table. Obviously, I think some others and you are gonna make this a political issue. I don't care if I'm making any money doing this job or not, I don't expect to make any money. So, you know, whatever the majority of the council wishes is fine with me. But, you know, I think we either need to, to, to pay this council what other councils of our comparable city size get paid, or just say to Acworth, "Make it zero."
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Another classic example of being dysfunctional. We have a special call meeting to order. Public input is supposed to be discussed before we get into this point. Let's have public input on this compensation.
I believe you signed up for it.
No.
No, sir. Yeah, that was, that's at the beginning of that agenda, if you noticed. You see, it says public input, item two, a special call meeting, and then it says item A, B, and then a German. Hey, you can talk about anything during public input. This was not a public hearing, this was public input.
I signed up for that.
He signs up for it.
Did you sign up for that? Okay, well, sure.
Once again.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, Andy, okay, Andy, and, uh, Ben, did you sign up for that?
There were three sheets, I signed one, I'm not sure, I wasn't sure what the order was.
Well, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. Andy, would you like to speak? Come, come on, we'll be happy to listen to you there. I'm sorry if I got the sheets mixed up here. We rarely have three attendants, to be honest with you. Thank goodness.
Thank you, council members. I wanted to talk briefly about the salaries, council members, and compensation for people on council that wants to get retirement benefits, those two issues. If you recall, on June second, two thousand and ten, I addressed the council members about pay raises for the council members. At that time, I think we had a, a good council member in Pat Tanner, raised that issue to give increases to council members, and I believe at that time, he said it wasn't right. It's still not right today. But all I can say is this.
Andy, talk to the microphone.
Hear that? As I said, on June second, two thousand and ten, I did talk about pay raises for city council members. And here's a general memo, I don't know if they have a record of it, where I talked about it. And I talked about it because at that time, Pat Tanner did some research about council members and felt that, uh, uh, what was paying to the city council member was in about embarrassment to the city at that time. Now, I don't think things have changed since then because the President of the United States just gives salaries to the Senate and to Congress. Was the time right for them? I, I don't think so, but they got raises. Corporate executives give, uh, who have, uh, losses over the years, has given themselves big bonuses and raises. Is it right for them? They still do it. So the point is, it's never gonna be a good time to give raises. Secondly, the city council met and voted six in favor of raises. To me, a small raise, I would never serve on a council paid this much because I think my services work more than what they're paying. Secondly, I think the people who have a part-time job as a council member should not get pension plans. It's a part-time. And you've got people worked with, uh, ten, fifteen years ago, getting thirteen thousand dollars a year in pension. That's not right. Most citizens in this country are facing pension plans and bankrupt. So pension plan's not the way to go. What the way to go is give a decent salary to the people who come to the council meeting. Look at Woodstock, look at other cities around that pay a decent salary. So if it was their time right, it was. Now, it's still, it's not a time right for this, as you indicated in the paper. The amount of money you give a raise is a small amount compared to the total city budget. So it's not a money issue, it must be a political issue. Lastly, I talked to several senior citizens in both parks, Boland Park and Heritage Park. They know what the city council did on votes about salary increases and benefits for retirees. They support fully the action taken by this city council and what they did about giving raises. I think the city council is thinking, is thinking outside the box. For too long, this city's thought inside the box. It's time to think outside the box, Mr. Mayor. Do something to change, do something for change for the city, not for the special interest groups that are here tonight clapping their hands for what you're doing. Stand up and lead and be a leader instead of being a follower. Thank you.
Let's have a little decorum in here, please.
Toots and decorum.
Well, I think, uh, anyone else? Let's see, Ben, I think your name, did you just, did you sign one or more or one? You wanna speak on this one or?
I'll just wait till we talk about the, uh, moving the money around.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, we have, uh, I, I think it, uh, would be appropriate for me to read exactly the, uh, the reasoning for the veto, uh, that I, that I utilized here. It says, after careful consideration, I am, uh, this date vetoing the mayor and council compensation ordinance that's passed by the Canton City Council on December twentieth two thousand and twelve, in accordance with the City of Canton Charter, section two dash two point twenty-two A, entitled mayors veto by, I'm vetoing this ordinance for the reasons stated below. The City of Canton and its citizens are currently experiencing the worst economic condition since the late nineteen twenties. I can assure you that, that time, times were better four, five years ago than they were in the nineteen twenties. It is the time for more austerity and less wasteful spending on behalf of our city government. An increase in council compensation of almost three hundred percent and an increase in the mayor's compensation of more than two hundred percent is unwise at this time. Those elected to the offices of mayor and council do so out of a sense of service to their community and not out of a desire for monetary compensation. While it is a sacrifice of time and energy for those of us who serve, it is an honor to be selected by our citizens to serve in our respective offices. We are rewarded by the satisfaction of knowing that we are making a positive difference in the lives of our citizens. The city, and, uh, and I might add it there, too, that I don't know that our getting more money is making a positive, uh, uh, difference in the lives of other citizens, only our own at that point. The city council, and it's December the twentieth, two thousand and twelve, meeting passed a resolution ending the retirement plan for city-elected officials. This resolution will save the city approximately sixty-five thousand dollars per year in premiums. The proposed salary increase for mayor and council will cost the city forty-one thousand four hundred dollars per year. By vetoing the proposed salary increase, the total immediate savings to the city would be approximately a hundred and six thousand four hundred dollars. This amount could be better spent for other needs of the city, including emergency services. While I do concede that the City of Canton compensation of elected officials lags behind most other cities of comparable size, it is my suspicion that most of these cities raised salaries for their mayor and council and economic times were better or good. Economic times are not good today. It is my recommendation to council consider revisiting the issue of increased compensation for mayor and council when the economy shows definite signs of improvement.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for reading that, because I agree with you probably through, uh, say ninety-four percent of what you just read.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Only thing is, we're looking at a twenty-four thousand dollar savings by doing away with the retirement package of sixty-five thousand and granting the compensation, and I hate the use of the word salary, I'm not salaried, I'm being compensated by twenty-one hundred a year now, uh, and we're gonna look at, for the entire council, including yourselves, with forty-one four hundred. Uh, the difference between sixty-five and forty-one four is twenty-four thousand dollars that we are saving, the citizens, taxpayers of this city. So I think it's in the interpretation of how you write things that I have a problem with. Uh, first of all, I wanna say when I, uh, was, uh, deciding to run for office and that issue came up about salary increase, I said, "I'll do a political suicide," and I got up and told this council, public input, that if I got elected, I would support an increase in compensation. Lo and behold, I got elected anyway, because I wanted the public to know that I feel that the compensation was wrong. So I was elected, duly elected. I support what we did and an agreement that we had with you on this part was, let's go ahead with it. And since then, you've changed your mind and ducked out.
Uh-oh. What? Uh, anyone else?
Sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, we're sitting here, we're doing all the discussion and normal process to make a motion. Uh, I've heard from both sides of the coin, and I'd like to make the motion that we adopt this ordinance, but the effective date be January first, two thousand and sixteen, when all of us have finished our terms. Therefore, newly elected at that time, or anyone elected that is not currently sitting here, would be eligible for that compensation. I am against voting for a compensation increase for myself. So that's my motion.
Tied with that, we had, based upon the committees you served on, benefits package for city employees and stuff, came back and recommended that we do away with council's retirement fund. We did agree, and that was going to be effective at the end of this current term. Therefore, that's what was presented, therefore, that's what we should stay with versus modifying and doing two sixteen. That's, that's in the middle of, at the end of your term.
Right. And of everybody's term.
No, my term ends this coming year. So, you know, it could mean nothing to me one way or the other, I don't know, and I don't care. But I think it's something that we said we would agree to, to stay with it. We did part one, this is part two.
Mr. Mayor? Motion's on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, we would have some discussion then. Oh, second.
Uh, what was, who made the motion?
I did.
You made the motion?
I made the motion that we adopt the ordinance with an effective date of January first, two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. Mayor, can I? I don't think we can do that, it just, okay, we can't change that. This is an override, isn't it? Can you change that?
I think the motion would be to let the veto stand and come back later with the new ordinance. I don't think we can change this ordinance at this point.
Okay, we have, okay, we have, do we have a second?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. It, it says right here, compensation ordinance veto is what we're supposed to be discussing. And, and how can we be making motions on a different?
I think that's what we just said, that you did. I would draw, I think you did that.
Okay, so, so thi- this discussion is limited to whether we're going to override the veto or not, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So if we do nothing, if nobody makes a motion to override veto, then the veto's staying.
That's already written.
But he withdrew his motion.
I'll rank a new motion, Mr. Mayor, if I might. I'd like to make a motion, we sustain the veto. Okay, we have a motion to sustain the veto. Do we have a sec?
Sure.
Have a sec. All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I love you, yes, sir, I got it. If we sustain the veto, that means the compensation will stay exactly where it is.
Correct, that's correct.
Or for all of it.
If we sustain the veto, you're right, ordinance goes away.
Ordinance goes away.
Okay, so we take this, take, take this off the table as a political football so we can have something else to fight about.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just clarification, if you vote or no, you're voting against. You're going to veto or write?
Clarification, I mean, yes is that you agree with the mayor's veto, no, you aren't voting. And I call for a roll call, please.
Mr. Goodman? Yes?
No.
Yes.
You got the yes, no, yes?
No.
No.
Bill? Yes, this is the same with the veto.
Yes, yes.
Sustain the veto.
Okay. Susan, you wanna explain that to us all, then?
Looks like we have four yellses, sustain the veto, and two no's.
Okay. Veto is sustained. Okay. Item B, action on ordinance to delete charter section two point three-five, after going mayoral staff.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, override the veto.
Second. We have a motion, second, override the veto. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cullen?
Uh, we had some pretty good input tonight about how we're changing the form of government, and I concur with that input. Position that I've always taken, Brian and I have come from different points of view on that, but my point of view is that we are undertaking step by step, by, uh, overriding this veto, we are taking singular steps towards a massive change in our form of government. And therefore, I will not go to override.
Any other discussion? Well, I will, I will admit something that when I, when I came into office, I, I guess I was under what I now believe mistakenly so, was the belief that we were, that we want a council manager for and a weak mayor. And you know, I wanted early on for, for this council, at that time, to get together and try to go through our charter. The charter's the guide for how we are supposed to operate. And, and it just never happened, and I apologize that we really never got to study our charter to find out exactly what does it say? What are the authorities, what are the powers? I mean, any of us have really looked at that section two point three-six and, and read what it actually says? Very few of us, I assure you. But I, at least there's at least a possibility, we, we may be looking at a different form than we had all thought that we were operating on. We have a motion, Mr. Jack, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor?
We had, we had GMA come up to a outing and actually go through that.
Well, uh... Well, they went through the different forms, I don't know if they went through our form. Now, let me say this about GMA. Uh, I have, uh, in fact, GMA, under their mon- I have, in fact, GMA, under their model, if you, if you go into the Georgia Municipal Association Model Ordinances, that statement is in the model ordinance for a strong mayor council manager form. That's the only place it is, and I have spoken to them about that. That's the only place it is, in the strong form.
Just a couple of meetings ago, we were talking about the charter, and we were, can you believe it enough, the council was criticized for talking about changes in the charter and reading it closely. And you've just apologized for the fact that we, that you hadn't read it closely enough, or we hadn't read it. And, you know, I think the council's due an apology.
Well, I think the council needs to take it on themselves to, to read the charter just like I should do.
I totally agree. I totally agree, but, you know, we're passing a lot of complaints and criticisms about, and I guess we all was our son, including the audience. And we all sat here, and we've heard some things said tonight that we know that are not accurate.
Did we always hear that?
I mean, coming from the audience, we've heard things that y'all have said we know are not accurate. I'm not going to point them out because it's consultational, and we're not supposed to do that. But you know it, and I know it.
Gee whiz.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, you've spent some things, and it comes across when it goes, you know, this thing when you tell one person one thing and you tell another person, and when it comes back, it's totally different, or a good bit different. That's what we're hearing. I see, I see your emails that you distribute, and you have fun some of those things, just like when you were saying just a minute ago, a three-hundred percent increase.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But my problem is that you're spending it, it's not a lot of dollars. We're a thousand dollars. It's not a lot of dollars.
Numbers don't lie, I'm telling you.
No, they don't, they don't, Gene. Three-hundred percent sounds big.
Oh, okay, I apologize for three-hundred percent.
No, three-hundred percent sounds big.
You know, that was accurate.
And it is three-hundred percent, and you laugh and sit there, but I've been around business long enough, you're not going to make a fool out of me on this.
I won't have to.
No.
All right.
I believe Phil was next there. Go ahead.
I would like to just clarify a few things on this. As we all know, a couple of weeks ago, we had an tentative agreement between us that you and John and I had met, and you had told us that you would support our fire departments bond referendum, and you had told us that you would support the proposed Department of Economic Development for the city in exchange for the, for, for John and I supporting your ability to hire one assistant. And that you would want to be the one to hire and fire that assistant, but it would be subject to the budgetary control of the city council. Oh, no, I've got a, and in, in your explanation of your veto here, number five, you had said, you had sent emails to John and me asking for confirmation regarding the wording of the charter change, and that you had received no response from John, and a request to meet next week from me after the ten-day veto period. You started emailing me on December, December the twenty-eighth, told me that you had the charter amendment prepared, letting you keep one administrative assistant, and that I should read that and let you know for sure if it's okay, and I responded. It's been nice to put city council on the back burner for a few days. Remember, this was December twenty-eighth. I have a house full of family and friends that'll be with us on Tuesday. Can we get together either Wednesday or Thursday, meaning yesterday or today? You, you replied back to me that you were operating under some time deadlines, you want specific, time is of the essence, you want a simple yes or no. I replied, I couldn't do that. I said, there are still a few details to work out. I said, that'll be December thirtieth. I'm confident we can accomplish this by Wednesday. John and I can meet with you on your office anytime Wednesday after three o'clock. That was the second time I asked you to sit down and meet with us, finalize the details of this, allowing you to keep your assistant. Again, December thirty-first, you said you felt like the agreement was straightforward, and you couldn't imagine any other details necessary. On December thirty-first, I answered back to you with examples of the details that were necessary for us to work out. Free and open two-way communication between the administrative assistant and the council members. Part of our original agreement was this assistant would also assist council members. I think it's important that it be noted that we would have free and open two-way communication between this administrative assistant and all the council members, since you would be, in essence, working for all of us, even though she would, you would be her immediate boss. I wanted that understood. Some believe, I said in the email, that the current sixty-four thousand dollar cost for the secretary is a little excessive, and we should reduce that. I stated right here, I have no problem with the mayor naming who fills the position, but some of the council do have a problem with that. Again, I said, I am still confident we can work this out by the end of the day Wednesday, if you would like to meet. Third time I'm asking you to meet, still you refuse to meet with me. Yesterday, oh, oh, another email. Again, I'm offering you that this was yesterday morning to meet with you and work out the final details, you still refused. I cornered you in the hall yesterday morning and said, please, sit down with me, let's talk this out, so we can give you your assistant that you want to have, that's so important to you. And again, you refuse to meet with me. A citizen asked me, who I was meeting with last night, if he could maybe get involved and mediate a meeting between you and me. I told him on an email, he's out here in the audience, you knows who he is, I said, I bet you Stan Rogers would let us use his conference room today, you and me could sit down and work this out. Again, you refuse to do that. Now, you put out an email to some of your friends, I don't have the copy here, but I've got it on my computer, saying that I was reneging on my deal that I made with you. That is a lie. That is just a damn lie. And I'm not going to sit here and be lied about to all these good people here. I have made every effort to try to work this deal out with you, and I'm not going to be called a liar and a person that reneges on their deals. Gene, I don't have a problem, even though I've spent months doing research, all these other cities comparable to us that do not have any mayor staff, including the county of Cherokee, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand people, Buzz Errins does not have any administrative assistant, no administrative staff, none whatsoever. I talked to him personally, it's unnecessary. I'm willing to support giving that to you if you will just do the simple duty of supporting your fire department and the director of economic development that we need sorely in this city. Woodstock, exact same population as us, twenty-three thousand, same form of government, six councils, city manager, no mayor staff. They do, Donnie Enriquez does not have any form of administrative assistant. If he needs secretarial help, the city clerk and the city manager perform that. Tommy Alliegood, mayor, city of Acworth, no mayor staff, population twenty-two thousand, same form of government as ours, council manager form of government. Mr. Mayor Alliegood does not have any staff. The city clerk supports him when he needs it. City of Carterville, Matt Santini, mayor, population twenty thousand, no mayor staff, same form of government, council manager, city clerk, city manager, assist all elected officials, no mayor staff. City of Milton, Joe Lockwoods, the mayor, population thirty-three thousand, six council members, city manager, no mayor's staff, he doesn't have any. The city clerk and the city manager assist all the elected officials as needed. We have a city clerk, and we have a city manager's assistant in Canton. City of Kennesaw, Mark Matthews, mayor, no mayor staff, population thirty thousand, five council members, city manager, council manager form of government, the assistant city clerk, and the city manager's secretary assist all elected officials as needed. City of Holly Springs, Tim Downey, no mayor staff, much smaller than us, ninety-two hundred people, still a part-time mayor, just like you are. We're all part-time, city clerk and city manager's assistant, assist the elected... I've actually been laughed at by some of these cities when I tell them, our mayor has a full-time assistant costing the taxpayers sixty-four thousand dollars a year. They laugh at me, saying, what in hell are you thinking, letting, you gotta get away with that. City of Alpharetta, fifty-eight thousand people, David Bellisle, the mayor, no mayor staff, six council members, city clerk and the city administrator's assistant assist all elected officials. Sandy Springs, Eva Galambos, mayor, ninety-five thousand population, mayor, six council members, city manager, same form of government as us. The city manager's administrative assistant assist all elected officials. Cherokee County, population twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, Buzz Errins, chairman, no chairman's staff, the county manager's assistant assist all elected officials as needed. Buzz wanted me to make that very clear. They have one administrative person totally handling all the five elected officials. I finally had to go to Marietta to find where elected officials have an administrative assistant. They have one person shared by all elected officials. They have seven-hundred-and-twenty employees, as compared to Canton's, one-hundred-and-fifteen. They have a city school system, they have a city power company, one administrative assistant shared by all elected officials, fifty-seven thousand population. Johns Creek, seventy-seven thousand people, mayor, six council members, median family income, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, five-hundred-ninety-two dollars. They have an assistant, an executive aide for the mayor. Guess who set that deal up? Marie Garrett. Does that ring a bell? Why do we have this? I'm still willing to give that up, as unnecessary as it is, just for you to support a fire bond referendum, so we can build fire stations to protect our people and our property.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Goodman?
We've already supported the fire bond referendum, but the question before us is, do we, as a council, have the right to change the form of government? We have heard from probably the best expert on it, Honorable Barnes, that we do not have that right, and therefore, we can do nothing but sustain, or in this case, since the motion's already on the floor, we can do nothing but sustain his veto. To override it would be, to me, ignoring top legal professional who had involvement in writing the law that's been sustained by the Georgia Supreme Court, it's in our handbook addressing that, and I now call question and ask for a vote.
Mr. Mayor?
We have a, I'm sorry, we have a...
Mr. Mayor, I'll...
Yes, go.
No, 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 sir, when you call for a question, you then vote, and you're going to continue discussion or vote on it?
Well, listen, when you call for a vote, we need a vote on it.
Continue discussion.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll do a roll call vote.
We'll give a second to that.
I think we have to vote on the call for the question, now hopefully we take on that. What happens with that? It's really, under our ordinance, it's called vote immediately.
That's correct.
But it is, it's undebatable, but it's, but you vote on whether to vote immediately.
It requires a second.
It doesn't require a second.
We're voting whether to continue discussion or not.
Right.
Didn't you ask for a motion to vote immediately?
We're having a vote on it.
We got a motion to vote immediately to all, I guess we'll just say all in favor, six to five to say yeah. I oppose, no.
No. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, wait, I believe Mr. Barrisford was, had his hand up next, and I'll be back with you.
Yes, I'll give him the full vote.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make one correction, and Mr. Goodman said the question before us has something to do with changing the form of government. That's not right. The question before us is, are we going to override the veto or not? That is the question before us. Let's stick to the facts.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Very interesting dialogues tonight, and particularly, I've always loved to hear from the public and input, and a lot of times, it's great information. And I heard tonight, one of the ones I really agree with, and it was the fact that there are ones, council members are once again meeting in the cave with a candle and a hood on their head, and secretly getting together and doing sorts of stuff at the expense of the taxpayers and stuff. But I have here, what I have is an interesting thing. I've got the City of Canton letterhead with a little column on it, and it says, council meeting tomorrow night, Thursday, January the third, very important. It was emailed from the mayor, and he's calling for the, the gang to show up after last council meeting. I'd hoped that the council had turned. The coroner was moving in the spirit of cooperation. I thought so too. I spoke with Mr. Bryant and Mr. Barrisford the previous week, and reached an understanding as to how the mayor could keep one administrative assistant, yes, but our main street director under the proposed economic development director in Brinsees, which I do not agree with, what you did say, yes, you did, and support the fire bond referendum. Yeah, we did, but it keeps coming back. We need support of the entire council, including the mayor. It was refreshing to be able to compromise with everyone, give a little. We did. The council voted unanimously to support this agreement. All of a sudden, now, it seems that Mr. Bryant and Mr. Barrisford have decided they cannot live with the agreement we made, and had elected instead to put the agenda on tomorrow night's council meeting at the budget amendment to remove all salaries from the mayor's budget, and therefore eliminating the mayor's administrative position. There is no logical reason for this. I know many of you have responded to the calls of support that I need at numerous city council meetings, and for that, I am extremely grateful. However, I'd like to call upon you once again, if you can possibly make it to the city council meeting tomorrow night, six P.M., your presence may just make the difference. I would have given you more notice, but Mr. Barrisford and Mr. Bryant just notified the clerk this afternoon, that was yesterday, that we wanted the agenda amended to have the first reading of the budget amendment to remove all salaries from the mayor's budget. This certainly doesn't give the public much notice. In the past year calls, letters, and commitments to our council members on other issues or help amendments, I hope you can be there for all this important possible. Thank you, Mr. Gene Hobgood, mayor. And, you know, it plays both ways, as far as I can see. Yeah, council does communicate, yeah, the mayor does communicate. So I just wanted to make it clear that it plays both ways.
Thank you, Mr. Barrisford, that was very nice.
I appreciate it.
What else? Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a, are we going to vote?
I already voted not to continue, to continue discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Clarification, one thing.
Yes, sir.
I keep hearing this thing is two-point-three-five, and then I hear thrown in there is two-point-three-six.
This has to do with two-point-three-five, right?
Yeah, but two-point-three-six was thrown about earlier. And, and I, it confused the issue, as far as I'm concerned, because if this is what we're voting on, and we can go to jail, is that what it's talking about? I mean, that was the threat. I mean, that was the threat.
I don't think anybody said anything about it.
Oh, yeah.
Virgil, I'll still lie, Billy.
I don't think that's a term of service, jail time.
What? That's not jail.
Not jail.
What if we don't play the line? What happens then?
Wait, let's go ahead. We got a motion and a second on the floor. We'll have a, we'll have a roll call vote, okay? As soon as you wanna restate the motion, Bill's motion, and, did you second it? Bob, did you second that motion?
I did. It was taken at the red.
Okay.
Override the veto.
Right.
Yeah, yes. Motion to override the veto.
Now, is that motion to override the veto?
Okay. Okay. Will I have a roll call vote, Mr. Gooden?
Yes.
Yes. No.
Mr. Barrisford?
I gotta check with my attorney sitting down here. I'm conflicted, I.
Mr. Barrisford?
What's the question again?
To override the veto.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, override the veto.
Okay. I guess the motion carries.
We're all going to do it.
I have to work.
No, not all of us.
All right. Okay, now, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this session. Motion, sack of those five, six and five of saying aye. All right, now, we will move into the second special call meeting. You guys take care.
Thank you.
Okay, the, we will entertain, this is a special call meeting regarding the BEX for the Etowah River Park as well as a, in the, to the budget, stormwater budget, to transfer funds for the stormwater budget to Cherokee County. Do you have any public input? I guess, Ben, you're the last one on there, I guess, have public input there. Did you want to say something again? Okay, your name was on both of them, I thought you might just put on both of them, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Hope you all have a Merry Christmas, and I'd like to wish you all a Happy New Year. My name is Ben Key, and I serve as citizens of Canton as a member on the city's stormwater advisory board. As you may remember, I stood at this podium on behalf of the stormwater advisory board last July, and asked you all to please consider reducing our stormwater utility fee, or rain tax, as I like to call it, by twenty-five percent to coincide with our reduced budget of thirty-five percent. If you remember, our research concluded there are only three other municipalities within the entire metro Atlanta area that have a stormwater fee as high as ours. Our committee thoroughly examined our budget line by line and concluded that we are simply taxing more than we are spending. Therefore, it was our conclusion and recommendation to this council that the proper thing to do for your citizens and job creators would be to reduce this tax. Usually, that's something politicians love to do, but rarely get the chance to. However, our recommendation was voted down by this council. I have yet to receive any viable explanation for your action, or rather, lack thereof. Therefore, I've drawn my own conclusion. You would rather continue to treat the stormwater utility fund as a slush fund for financing various city projects rather than being a good steward of the public funds that are intended to be used in an effort to improve the quality of water from rainstorms that eventually reaches our streams, creeks, rivers and lakes. This, after all, isn't the main objective of the stormwater program. It's all supposed to be about improving water quality. This may seem like, and is intended to be, a rather scathing and accusatory statement that reflects my opinion as well as others on the stormwater advisory board. However, it's not made without justification. Here's a refresher of past usage of stormwater funds. A few years ago, we had, we began four streetscapes projects, the Hickory Flat Road project, the Main Street project, Marietta Road, and Waleska Street. As you all remember, eighty percent of the money for these projects came from a federal grant. The city can't have the pony up the other twenty percent. That twenty percent totaled one-point-two-nine-six million dollars. The amount of that one-point-two-nine-six that came from the city, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars of it came from stormwater. That's seventy-five percent of all the money that the city put came from the stormwater fund. Tonight, you'll be discussing where to find the approximately four-hundred-thousand dollars you need in order to add a playground and a footbridge to your Etowah River project. These are two of the six optional additional cost items presented to the council on top of the base bid for the project. Let me be clear, this is something that does not have to be done. If the city was satisfied with the original plan that was let out to bid, the total amount of city funds necessary to build this project would be zero. Myself, other members of the stormwater advisory board, and probably many of you stormwater utility fee payers are appalled by the fact that you are considering once again to raid this money from the stormwater fund. The last time I checked, building playgrounds and bridges does nothing to improve the quality of our water. It's only the de facto solution taken by the city anytime additional money is needed to fund another project. Let me be perfectly clear, the county has already agreed to fund one-hundred percent of the necessary stormwater infrastructure associated with this project. It's a fundamental design element in the original plan that was let out to bid and awarded to Development Partners of Georgia. Mr. Barrisford was kind enough to give out part of that bid to quite a few members of this council, and that was part of the base bid. That does not include any of the additional items that this council has elected to add. If the council did not elect to add any of the one through six items, total city dollar would be zero. The monies contributed by the city for this project are solely for the addition of playground equipment and a bridge over the Etowah River. These seem like great additions, and I'm sure that they will be enjoyed by many citizens, including myself. My only problem with it is that you're paying for it by taking money that was pledged for improving stormwater quality and spending it instead on a playground and a bridge. Isn't there a Parks and Recreation Fund or a SPOS Fund? Wouldn't it make more sense to take the money from either or both of those funds? You know, this is very similar to what the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners did when they realized that Ball Ground Recycling was in default on their lease payments of the recycling center in Ball Ground. Monies were taken from the SPOS Fund, transferred to the general fund, and then used to make bond interest payments. This was explained and justified to the citizens that the SPOS funds were not being used to cover the bond payments, but rather to fund the purchase of police cars that had already been purchased by the county out of the general fund. Now, was this legal? Probably so. But was it right? Absolutely not. To make another comparison, I'm sure that many years ago, our United States Congress had a grand plan or project that they needed to figure out a way to fund. Someone had a grand idea of using money from the Social Security Trust Fund to finance their project. Unfortunately, this funding tactic was used over and over again, and now our social security system is bankrupt. This ongoing misuse and misappropriation of public funds is one major reason the public has lost faith in these elected officials. This is exactly the reason the T-SPOS failed, the host tax failed, and ultimately, the reason that I believe your fire tax bond will fail. I urge you to please make a statement of good faith towards your citizens and job creators tonight, and please find another way to pay for your playground and footbridge. Thank you for your time tonight, and as always, for your continued service to the citizens of Canton.
Thank you.
I'll toss you guys down.
Carol Day.
I've come late to allow this information, but the gentleman just spoke, spoke more clearly about very definite figures that also state what the citizens, I believe, have in mind for what we do with our finances as a city. Our budget should reflect exactly where the money goes in instances where we're dealing with the playground, and we're dealing with the park, and we've had a lot of discussion over it, that's what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with stormwater. Earlier, last year, it came up that we needed to change garbage fees because we needed more money, and when it all came out, garbage was overfunded because, and there was no need to raise that. What we're hearing from people now is that stormwater money is being diverted, and I like this social security thing, because that really affects, but diverting money from one place to another that are not interrelated is not an appropriate delegation of your funds, and it's not a conscientious way to spend your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have item, item A, actual Etowah River Park bids. Mr. Barrisford?
Thank you. Once again, I do appreciate the input from our citizens, and once again, misinformation is rampant. What I did pass out to the delegate out here in the crowd was a fact that the Etowah Park Order of Magnitude Cost Estimates Final Design, if those people who spoke and those out there who didn't speak and have an opportunity to look at that sheet that I passed out, I'd be more happy to explain it to you. The highlighted color here on number two, it says, "Site Demolition," and clearly there is highlighted, "Stormwater, ten-inch and eighteen-inch," and it's cost twenty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. That's, that was just a guesstimate. As it turns out, the guesstimates were low. Erosion Control, every one of these items under the erosion control is storm-related, stormwater, I should say, related, and that's based off of our city engineers' input. Underneath number five, it says, oh my goodness, "Stormwater, draining," and it lists excessive amount of items, storm pipe, storm fly, twenty-four inch, thirty inch, backfill, dig a hole, it's excess, to the tune of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, excuse me, two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. You take those three items I mentioned, add it up, it turns out to be stormwater-related, three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-six-hundred dollars, plus you add a sixteen percent that our illustrious XDR group came in at a little bit, it really is a neighborhood of around three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I got all excited here, and I was looking at them, and I said, "Ben, look at you." And lo and behold, all I'm asking for out of the stormwater fund is three-hundred-thousand dollars. That is my motion amendment, but before we can do that, what we have to do, and Mr. Evans has taken the time out of his evening to sit here and listen to this illustrious body build through the normal rigmarole that we go through.
He hasn't been bored, I bet.
Uh, well, no, he said, he just came from Nelson, and I don't know if that's good or bad, but anyway, I would ask if it's council approved, can I have him step to the podium, give us some information here? We need to get this signed tonight so we can get this park that is probably eight years in the making, done. I would love it. Can we have that? And then I will bring this budget amendment, number five, the three-hundred-thousand dollars, and that needs to be voted on so we can get that squared. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to allow, Mr. Ackles, I don't know why we wouldn't do that. Okay, I have a motion, a second, those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Ackles?
Mayor, council and members of the public here tonight, let me first say that as a result of the, some of the discussions that we had using the park bonds, that we separated and clearly established the funding under the park bond for the city Etowah Park and for the, for the Killian Park that's gonna be built over off of Butte River near Chat. With that clear line of separation between the budgets, we took the bids, and we have a, an apparent low bidder, Georgia Development, for the Etowah. We have a different WE contracting, a different contractor for the Killian. Let me first say that, that one of the, one of the many driving issues from the public and with the city and with the county was to get the baseball field start. My memorandum that will go to before the commission, hopefully next Tuesday, and the council knowing that there's a separate, there's a clear separation of the budgets, we also suffered an over, an overestimate bid. We have been able to find and make up our difference on the Killian side that I want to tell you does not sacrifice or cross over that line and will not harm the money that's available under that letter from August sixteenth. And so with that being said, if the council desires some additional time to study the matter on Etowah, I'd like to let you know that I'm prepared to take to Mr. Cooper, the county manager, and to the Board of Commissioners, a recommendation that we move forward on Killian so that we can begin the construction of ball fields. But with that being said, the, the issues before you tonight is that I have prepared a letter that was addressed to Mr. Wood and was distributed, and basically, there's three parts of that letter, is that the determination of where the funds are coming from is solely discretion of the city. The county wishes only that the letter that comes back from the city attest to the fact that the, that the use of those funds is legal, that it is proper, and that those funds be made available within ten days to the commission, to the, to the county, so that when the Board of Commissioners votes to approve the contract, we know that that money is in fact in the county's hands because we are signing a contract committing that level of funds, including the additional funds. So those three things of your decision of where the money comes from is yours, we need an add for the, for the letter to be signed attesting that it's a legal transfer of that money in the ten-day time period. But we are ready to proceed, Mayor and Council.
Mr. Cummins?
If I understand correctly, Mr. Ackles, there is no urgent necessity for us to decide in this call meeting what is to be done in the Etowah Park. This could be done in our normal process of a work session and a voting session, and as long as we have it finalized by, I believe, the date March thirteenth, if money's determined and set aside by that date, we would be okay relative to the Etowah Park.
Council, yes, sir, that, that is correct. The bids are good for up to ninety days. We took bids on December thirteenth, so ninety days is March thirteenth. Based upon my reading of the calendar, the council will need to act, I think, at its February twenty-first meeting in order to get that recommendation so that the board can act, the Board of Commissioners can act at its meeting of March fifth, so that we can make that award within that ninety-day period. But, but you would have some time, and unless council has any objection, I am prepared to, to move forward with the award of Killian, again, because we have that clear separation of, of funding, that, that any additional money that I need for Killian is not coming from the city's side of that allocation.
Now, do we, do we have to approve Killian?
No, sir, you don't.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, I, I do thank you, the city, for the letter of August, it made my life a long easier.
Okay, good, good. Let me, let me ask you this, because I don't want anybody to think we put any spin on anything around here, but the, the stormwater facilities and were, was included in the original base bid, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. As the gentleman spoke from the advisory, he is correct. As a, as a part of near, as a part virtually of every construction project that is done now, stormwater is, is a portion of that. It is a, it is a part that is funded under the park bond, is a normal course of business, and that money is a part of the project and is part of the...
So what we, what we would be doing in order to get the additional alternates of the playground equipment or what, a bridge and so forth, is that we would be, if we took stormwater, and this is really not your bailiwick here, but how we get it, but we would really be taking the, the stormwater money and taking money out of the bond and paying for the recreational equipment and putting the stormwater money in essentially on what was originally like the base bid. the base bid. We'd just be substituting. And otherwise, if we didn't do that, then what we'd be doing, we'd be buying playground equipment and other things with stormwater money. Does that make any sense?
No.
No? That's not right?
No.
Okay. I don't want to spin this thing. I want to make sure everybody's got it straight in their mind.
Well, it's pretty evident by the document that I was showing earlier that stormwater entitled here is stormwater. Now, what's wrong with taking a project of this city and utilizing funds from stormwater to put it here? We are not buying a-
I didn't say anything wrong with it. Don't get me wrong.
Well, I'm looking at you because that's what you want.
That's what you want, is to make sure you understand.
Yeah. Playground and bridge is alternates. This is for ground preparation and to have it erosion control and stormwater drainage.
But that would have already been paid for even without the stormwater money. That would have been paid for in this base bid. Right? So in reality, we're just doing the stormwater in order to get the other-
Well, yeah, yes.
But the way you have to do that, as I understand it, is that we essentially are substituting that stormwater money into where the base bid was to cover the stormwater.
We're transferring. We'll be asking here shortly to transfer three-hundred-thousand dollars.
I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to spin this, but I want everybody to understand it's being taken here, thrown there, put there, taken over here.
Okay.
No spinning.
Okay. And you know what we're going to do? We'll call it, to simplify it, excuse me. We'll call it stormwater, and we'll move it over here and call it stormwater. Stormwater? Stormwater. Duh!
There are basically three problems with this. For absolutely no valid reason that I see, we are bypassing all normal council procedures and heretofore meeting protocol by having a special call meeting on something of which there is no sense of urgency. We are bypassing the Stormwater Advisory Board, who in my opinion should have a strong say whether it is valid to use stormwater funds for recreational infrastructure construction. The county does not do this. I do not, cannot mind anybody anywhere that does infrastructure, recreational infrastructure construction. We have allowed some public input, but we haven't allowed enough time to maybe get enough public input. We are bypassing, that comes under COE, under D, that's us. We are bypassing the process of having a first and second reading of an ordinance, and I do not believe that the ordinance will properly advertise. The proposal before us is a complete change of the agreement made by the council members relative to the development of the two parks. I will only speak to the Etowah Park at this time. The original agreement was for us to obtain a base bid for the park, and with any excess funds, which happens to be six-hundred thousand, was originally estimated to be a made. Excess funds from the total amount available select alternatives to be included. The amount available for the Etowah Park is three million and twenty-four thousand six-hundred-and-eighteen dollars minus the base bid of two million three hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-six, leaving six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars for alternatives. Instead, Mr. Barrisport and Mr. Huffman have changed the heretofore agreement and have decided to pick the alternatives they wish to have and then go find the additional funds required from somewhere else. The bridge alone is going to cost five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-four dollars. As much as I would like to have the other alternatives, I cannot justify to my constituents the use of unbudgeted funds during these times to enhance Etowah Park. Therefore, I recommend the bridge, which will connect the parks, to the only alternative selected at this time. When economic times are better and funds can be budgeted, is when I can support adding of the other alternatives. The third problem is, in order to find excess funds, it is being proposed that three-hundred-thousand dollars be taken from stormwater fund. I am against doing this because I believe that it's use of the funds for a purpose that is not covered by this fund. If this is a legitimate use of stormwater funds, why was it not included in the plan from the start? The country, the county does not use stormwater funds for any recreational facilities development. To find permitted usage of stormwater through my research includes improving maintenance and repair of the existing stormwater system, developing stormwater design standards and regulations and ensuring they are met, construction of overdue flood protection and water quality management projects, stormwater infrastructure replacement to include culverts, dams, curved inlets, headwalls, and conveyance systems. I could find nowhere the allowed use of stormwater funds for the initial construction of infrastructure required because of land disturbance by a municipality and the development of a recreational park. In conclusion, I think the Etowah Park should be moved to the work session meeting for discussion with votes to occur on the seventeenth of January. I also think all procedures and protocols should be followed, and both public and stormwater board be allowed to weigh in with their opinions. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, do we have a motion?
No, not yet.
Okay. Then we shouldn't have been having any discussion, but.
Well, the reason we have, I always do. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I didn't start the discussion.
But we have a discussion because we have an individual that's taken his time this evening to put up with this stuff that we do here. I want to thank Mr. Echols once again for putting up with it. Now, to address my esteemed colleague, Mr. Cummings' comments. Interesting enough, he was volunteering, he showed up to a couple of these meetings that we had every month to work our way through the parks. He dropped out for whatever reason, I have no idea. And Mr. Huffman was kind enough to step in. So throwing the bomb toward Mr. Huffman, yeah, he did step in. Now, here's the deal. We have talked numerous times about alternatives. Mr. Echols even came in here and said, "You guys pick out the alternatives you want." We did pick out the alternatives. We discussed those, and we did. By discussion numerous times, sir, we did. We did discuss it. So it's been like a work session, a work session. Nobody's caught off guard, nobody's surprised. And at the last council meeting, I did say, "We would be coming to this council meeting to make a decision because we want to get this park up and going." Here we go again, break out the burr bill can, kick it down the road to play games again for whatever reasons. It is stormwater, period.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the council to address this. We all have our opinions. Mr. Cummings always has a long drawn-out opinion, some good, some we may not consider good. The question is, are we in a legal bounders? And I'd like the council to address that.
My understanding, I think, from what Mr. Echols said last time, the way we would accomplish that, we have an agreement with the county to take over the stormwater part of the project. We would agree with the county that the city would do the stormwater project, and there are identifiable things that are stormwater, from my understanding of it. So I think it would be appropriate to spend, and how you characterize that is up to you, but I think you can do it legally. But it would be done to an agreement with the county. I think you admitted that last time, but we might need to amend our agreement.
Mr. Dyer, are you saying that certainly the city would not undertake the-
No, no. We would do it to fund the stormwater portion of the project. The city would pay the county money for stormwater purposes. And the county would move the money around to pay for the bridge and the-
That's what I was saying to you, Miss, go take it here, put it there.
How you characterize it?
But as I said, in the letter and as I've said before, the county is really outside of the decision of where the city gets the money, and I really don't want to enter that. All we want to know is if whatever source you select is legally available, is a forever unconditional, the money can't be given to us and then later found to be not proper and then extracted, once we will have issued that contract and that work started. And I need that money because when I go before the board of commissioners, they're going to ask me those questions, "Do we have the money? When are we going to get the money?" And that's what my agenda will say, is that the money is legally coming to us, it will be here still.
And my point is just, as long, stormwater fund can be spent on stormwater activities until as long as that is done.
So all I was wanting to say is that we all have some good opinions here and some rights, some, you know. Mr. Dyer is our legal counsel. We will be voting on this, and hopefully we got legal reasons to take and stay in what we want. Mr. Dyer stated so we're not out of bounds on a legal basis. You might have a different opinion, but that's, you know, we all have opinions. But Mr. Dyer is our legal counsel.
Would we, let me ask Mr. Dyer, of course, here for now, getting Mr. Cummings. If we didn't have an agreement with the city, would we, could we use it for the other facilities? Could we pay for the playground equipment or anything else there?
No, that's why I think you have to something with the county that says we are agreeing to pay the stormwater portion of the-
I was in the base.
You can't just give them the money. It's got to be for the stormwater portion. To be able to use the stormwater fund.
And fortunately enough, as Mr. Echols said, when I addressed this issue in this room a few weeks ago, and he nailed me, because I questioned that as well, and he said, "What is the first thing that we will be undertaking when we start this park?" It's stormwater. Putting it so, putting in pipes, that's the first thing they're going to do. So we need to pay for our portion of that right up front.
Okay, Mr. Cummings?
Actually, if we didn't do the park, we wouldn't need the stormwater, so that money would never do it. So what we're saying is, we're using money from another fund to solve a problem that we create by generating the park.
That's okay.
Now, my second question would be is, is the, Mr. Rush has set aside two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars reserved for these type of things. Why shouldn't we, or shouldn't we consider using that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for these extras that we're going to get in the park? And there's a reserve fund of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
That same amount?
No. It's three-hundred and something. No. Why can't we use, consider using that money for the extras in the park?
Reserve is for emergencies.
Well. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I've been listening through all this. Kind of unusual, I'll project that, but instead of talking. We've got the spreadsheet. It lists all these different concrete, drainage, all these items, clearly stormwater. Our engineer has assured us that it's stormwater items. We know the stormwater portion of the park will greatly exceed three-hundred-thousand dollars, probably by some sixty or seventy thousand dollars. So we got a good cushion there to make sure we're legal. We've been assured by our legal counsel that it's legal to do this. Mr. Key mentioned earlier that he's never yet heard a viable explanation as to why we have the money in the stormwater fund. Well, Mr. Key, if you've been listening, you now have your viable explanation. Stormwater dollars collected from the taxpayers will be used to fund stormwater projects. Viable explanation complete.
But only as a means to get your branch in playgrounds.
What else?
Would Mr. Barrisport make a motion so we can sell?
Okay. This is what we have for us tonight, so Mr. Echols can take back the document saying we're going to honor the bills that we were given. We need to have it signed tonight, and that is the reason I called a meeting, because we got to vote to have this done. So the question will be, and Mr. Wood, I don't know if you've filled out the program amounts, but those have to be filled out, but I want to vote tonight, fill it out and get it to Mr. Echols tomorrow immediately with the mayor's signature, saying that this city has finally made a decision on a park that has been on the books for eight-plus years, and we, that's one number one. So I'll make a motion that we vote, and you have it in your pocket, pull it out, look at it, that we say, please, go ahead. Okay, the motion is, this guy.
To make clarification, what I need the city to do is to select which alternates you want to accept. There's a circle yes or no, circle yes or no. Okay, that's what I need, and then I need, then you've got to do some math.
But that follows from the vote. The math follows from the vote. Mr. Barrisport, if I could suggest, I think if we took each item separately as a separate motion, at least you'll know what's been approved, so that you move to approve the base bid first, move to approve alternative one, move to approve alternative three.
Take your counsel. Appreciate it. Then I'd like to make a motion, which, the motion is that the lump sum base bid proposed amount for two million three hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents be accepted by the city. It's a yes or no, and my recommendation is a yes. That's my motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion at this point? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion.
Second part, alternatives. Alternative number one, this is for playground equipment that has absolutely nothing to do with storm. It's to three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-one dollars and eighty-one cents, accepted by the city. Yes, is the motion.
We have a motion to accept that alternate number one. We have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All members voting for the motion except for Mr. Cummings.
Alternate number two, bridge over Etowah River, including abutments, boardwalk, accessories, et cetera, in the tune of five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-four dollars and seventy cents, accepted by the city. Yes.
And motion in a second, that we accept that alternate number two, the bridge. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion.
Alternate number three.
And then I think you can just lump all the rest of them together. Yes or no? Because as I understand, you weren't going to do the rest of them?
Your recommendation is the same with everyone?
I'm sure he's got one more. Alternate number three is the ellipse, lighting, irrigation, shelters, and overlook at the river, a five, a fifty-four thousand nine fifty-eight, fifty-eight cents. City accepts, yes.
We have a motion and a second to accept that alternate number three, lighting, fifty-four thousand nine fifty-eight, fifty-eight. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All members voting for the motion with the exception of Mr. Cummings.
Alternate number five, landscaping.
Number four?
No, it's number five.
Oh, okay. Should we not read or reject?
I need a vote on each of them, there.
Alternate number four, trails to Bowled Park, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-fifty-ninety-nine cents, accepted by the city, no.
We have a motion not to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All members voting for the motion with the exception of-
I think we need to clarify.
The motion wants to reject the no, says you are not going for the alternative, so it's- Motion wants to reject the no, says you are not going for an alternative, so it should be acceptance of a yes for the no vote.
Okay, let's, let's vote that, yeah. The, the, a yes vote is not to accept the-
Alternative.
Alternate number four. All those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, no? All members voted for the motion.
Drum roll. Alternate number five, landscaping, sixty-eight thousand, two forty-eight and ninety-five cents, the city accepts with a yes.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Have a motion and a second, the landscaping of sixty-eight thousand, two forty-eight, ninety-five. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, no?
No.
All members voting for the motion with the exception of Mr. Cummings.
Alternate number six, amphitheater, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one sixty-one and ten cents, accepted by the city, and the, is a no. We need a yes for this no.
Okay, now, is that two ninety-one?
Let me ask the question over there, before we go any further. We have a motion, and we have a second, right? Is the two ninety-one, is that, that's for the complete deal, right? It's not, that's just for the concrete and stage?
No, that's for the top.
The two ninety-one is for the top? Okay, so we're rejecting the top? Okay. The recommendation is-
In the base bid, the base bid has the staging area, wall around it, vertical outlines, holes where you put the columns in eventually when we get the, go ahead and get it done.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions or questions? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, no? All members voted for the motion.
Alternate number seven, seeding grass lawns in lieu of the sod at the amphitheater, soccer field, moment first field, including all necessary needed watering and maintenance throughout the construction period until the substantial completion and acceptance by the Cherokee County and the city of Canton, and deducted ninety-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents, and the answer to this one, the city says no, with a yes.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, we have a second. You want, you want to explain exactly what that is?
That means that if we opt to go with seed on these identified fields, then they would take a deduction of ninety-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and ten cents.
Recommendation is to go with sod?
Recommendation, in the base bid it is, yes.
Okay, so the recommendation on this one is to, is a no, or off and a second?
Correct.
And we have a second. Any other discussion?
I need to understand, or, we're, John, the, the recommendation is to not sod?
No, recommendation is the sod, not seed.
So, wait, I vote, is what you're asking for.
The confusion, the confusion is that this one is a D-dog. Oh, God.
Got it. And I need a yes vote. I don't answer-
We have a motion, and we have a second, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, no? All members voted for the motion.
Okay, we're down to, yeah. Counsel.
Where do we go from here and have our little discussion?
We're done with that, aren't you?
Yes.
Anything else?
Okay, everything is done. Yeah.
Does that cover everything, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, but now you need four hundred and eighteen thousand and some change, not just three hundred thousand.
Correct. And that's the reason Mr. Wood will have this filled out.
You said you needed to check for, within ten days. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll bank it behind you. I left it in.
I still got that.
Okay, so, I, now, I respectfully ask the mayor to sign the document. You should have a copy of that.
To sign this document, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back here now, once again, back to the agenda.
Did you sign?
Yeah, I think I'll be signing, filled in for us.
Trust me, trust me.
I've done that before, and I've heard.
Mayor, for your clarification, I, you can imagine, I've done, I've done the math. When you, when you take the base bid and you accept the alternates that you have, by my calculations, the city needs to find four hundred, eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Four, one, eight, one, five, one, ninety-nine cents, correct answer. That's, that, that is now your additional funding requirement.
Okay, next I have on the agenda-
Let me ask a question.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Would it be okay that we send this document over to you tomorrow after it's sealed out?
I, I, I need it by, by ten o'clock in the morning. I'm, I'm already two days past getting over the boards, then Mr. Cooper has given it to Gray Spirit on ten o'clock.
We didn't have enough, we have the, we should have had a budget amendment on this thing for sales tax and what? Right? Sales, where's all, where's the four hundred and eighteen coming from?
Parks and Recreation, three hundred from a hundred, a hundred and eighteen.
Do we have that budget? Well, that's what I'm saying, the council need to approve that, if that's what we're going to do. We, it, it, yes, we, yes.
That wasn't part of budget, that's just-
Exactly.
Do you want to make a motion on that?
It would be helpful for us to-
Did you do that number again?
It's one eighteen, I'm sorry, go ahead. One eighteen, one fifty, one ninety-nine.
From, from SPOSS Recreation Funds. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to utilize, to authorize the expenditure of a hundred and eighteen thousand, one fifty, one ninety-nine from SPOSS recreational tax. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, no? All members voting for the motion.
Okay, then one other final point, sir.
Yes.
Then that has been done. Fill in the blanks, just sign it and give it to him so he can go out of here tonight with it.
Mr. Mayor, don't we have to vote on the use of this one more time?
Well, we, yeah, we still got to vote on, on here, right?
Yeah, then I'll do that, then I'll do this.
Barrisford, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I have, uh, I'm going to the ordinance number, it's Budget Amendment Number Five, to amend the budget for a transfer of three hundred thousand dollars from stormwater contingency to the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners as a funding for the Etowah River Park for use of stormwater. Intercept, uh, motion. Second.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second to, to transfer, uh, three hundred thousand from stormwater fund, I guess the stormwater contingencies?
That's what it said.
Okay, to, to Cherokee County?
Yes, to be used for stormwater in the park.
To be used for stormwater in the park. Any, any other questions? Discussion? If not, those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, no?
No.
All members voting for the motion with the exception of Mr. Cummings.
Okay, go back to the final, and it's going to, I would ask that the Cherokee High School band be tonight the president. They couldn't make it, so I would like to have the drum roll and say, can we fill in the blank now and have it signed so that we can-
I will plead the duties as described to me by law, and I will continue to do that as best I can. The, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, what does that mean? You weren't gonna do it tonight?
You know, I don't know, I, I'll think about that. I'll think about what I want to do. You know, it is subject, it is subject to a ten day, a week, a year, it's a budget amendment, you know, subject to that. I'm not saying I would do that, but I'm just saying it's subject to that, so I'll call Mr. Paul on that. Have a motion to adjourn, have a second. Those in favor, sixty-five, saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, no?
Mr. Mayor?
All members voting for the motion, we adjourn.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Are you aye? And Mr. Echols, step back to the podium for a second.
This, this, this-
This won't take that long.
Let's, let's think about this, actually.
Then I'll do, I'll do it. Mr. Echols, thank you for all the effort you put forth and your staff throughout the period of time, trials and tribulations.